Thanks again, everybody, for joining us today. The Internet Society Board Meeting is now returning into open session after having heard some committee reports in closed session. The first item of business on today's agenda is the President and CEO's report from Andrew Sullivan.
Thank you. So I circulated about a week ago a report on this that contains two relevant items before we turn to the organizational performance thing in just a moment, which has historically normally been part of this presentation as well. But now Sally's going to look after that as the Managing Director of the Internet Society. So as you know, we did this small change to the organization's alignment, starting as of the first of the year. So we moved some things around. As the reports stated, we had a project plan for that. We went through the project plan. We succeeded in doing the project plan. Nothing got dropped. Everybody got moved around the way it should have happened, and it was largely successful. You know, we've still got some rough edges, as happens whenever you've got any kind of organizational change. There's some stuff that you find, oh, well, like, this didn't work exactly the way we wanted. We're working through that, but nothing, in my opinion, that was dramatic or unexpected. So that's the first item. The second item is we are proceeding with the diversity, equity, and inclusion work within the staff. This is relevant to a report that came almost two years ago now that was somewhat controversial, and maybe the vendor didn't do everything that we wanted them to. So we've undertaken a new piece of work on that. The vendor has proceeded, and we're now proceeding to the next phase. So that is also happening. I don't know if there are any questions, but if not, we can head to the next item.
Okay, seeing no questions on that, the next bit is the review of organizational performance. Sally?
Thank you. Excuse me. We have some slides. There was a much longer slide deck that was circulated. I am not going to go through all 48 slides. I'm going to hit the top five or six, if that's all right. If you do have questions about the details, happy to take those. So this is a report on the results of the Internet Society's Action Plan 2022 and our performance against our success measures. As you will see, there were 56 total success measures, of which 77% were achieved. 20% were not, and three were canceled for reasons having to do with changing dynamics within the organization. We will go through these. The report goes through these in much more detail. I'm going to provide a summary. Next slide. So as you know, we divide our work largely into three areas. One is the work we do on growing the internet. The second is on making the internet stronger, and the third is around empowering people. So that's how I'll organize the report. The work that we did on growing the internet was very successful again this year. We continue in a mindset of community-driven and collaborative-driven development, and really trying to work with organizations, chapters, individual members, and experts in the community to carry out our vision of building the internet. We made a pledge at the ITU's World Telecom Development Conference, the Partner to Connect Initiative, to build 100 new, what they called complementary access solutions, also known as community networks, and train 10,000 people by 2025. And that pledge is now part of the action plan that you approved this year to work towards that goal. We supported more than 34 infrastructure deployments as part of our overall goal of getting a stronger and more resilient internet developed around the world. The new e-learning courses, which we will speak about in more detail in the empowering section, but continued to be very popular and draw in a lot of participants, and we saw 136% increase this year. The Measuring the Internet project gained a fair amount of attention early in the year during the Russian invasion of Ukraine in that the staff, but also working with a lot of people in the measurement community, were able to analyze some of what was going on in the internet and in the infrastructure, and really speak meaningfully about the impact of sort of the geopolitical situation on the internet in that region. And that actually put Pulse on the map in some ways and has given us some insight as to how that tool could continue to develop. And then fundraising continues to be successful. And I think, as you had already heard, we brought in grants from Meta, ICANN, NRC, and 48%. Next slide. I thought I just saw Laura asking to come in. There she is. I thought it was actually important to take a moment and recognize this. We completed the work on the Facebook grant this year, or in 2022. That was a long endeavor from 2018 to 2022. A lot of work went into that, obviously due to the generous support from Facebook. But as I was getting ready to come here, I started stepping back and looking at the overall results. And it's an impressive amount of work that this grant enabled us to do to strengthen and build infrastructure around the world. So I did want to use this opportunity to pause and look at more of a four- and five-year span and look at, you know, peering workshops, development events to bring people together to understand the importance of this community, launching new IXP's, leveling up 29 existing IXP's, which is a tremendous amount of work to achieve. And it's something that we're really very proud of. So I wanted to take a moment and highlight that. Next slide.
So just to connect that to the measurement project as well, do we have any sense at this point of kind of what the traffic through the set of IXP's is? Because it seems like it'd be a great soundbite, you know, that we've supported throughput of, you know, n gigabytes in however many countries.
I think that is something that we would like to see the Pulse tool start to be able to do. And we've been working to connect the tool and the platform with this kind of measurement, maybe possibly even out of community networks as well, certainly through the IXP's. So yes, this is something that we would like to do as those IXP's get going. And it's also frankly something I've been asking as well of all of these deployments. You know, are we checking in? How are they doing? Are they continuing to grow? A fabulous story out of some of this work was supporting the Kenyan IXP. And the work we did to level up that IXP in advance of the election was one of the reasons that the internet stayed on during the Kenyan elections last year. So the technical work really, you know, has real-world impact.
Yes, I also congratulate you about this big and successful project. I believe that we need to produce more formal materials, yes, publications about this project. Because also in the same line with community networks, many of future projects may come from inspiration. Yeah, so we need to publish this story, as you were saying, in Kenya. So people get excited and get the idea of building new IXP's. Thank you.
Absolutely. And also, as we publish the Impact Report this year, you will see some of those stories come through the Impact Report. Because it's important not to just deploy the infrastructure, but to have an understanding of the impact that it's having in the world. So I take your point, and we'll follow up on that. But then also, in the next several weeks, watch the space for the Impact Report where we'll bring some of those stories forward. Strengthening the internet. We met 81% of our success measures. And this is where we laid the groundwork for some of the work we spoke about yesterday in that we completed the Internet Wave Networking Project last year at the mid-year point, which gave us the Internet Wave Networking Framework, the Impact Assessment Toolkit, all of those pieces that enable us to be stronger advocates for the internet going forward. And those got a lot of attention and a lot of support in the community. And we were able to produce 24 impact briefs, which was well in excess of our target. That's not just staff production. That's working with partners in the community who saw value in this tool and wanted to make use of it. And also, as I think I mentioned in the original action plan, the digital sovereignty work that was done to develop an understanding of how that term is used around the world, what it means, what the impact of it is, really gave us another piece of the foundation for advocacy this year. And that was work that was done with a lot of input from the community, a lot of consultation, and went through our formal policy development process and produced a result that, you know, we're really quite proud of. The Manners community continues to grow and self-organize. They're, you know, the steering committee and other parts of that community are coming together. They are looking for increased and even more robust routing security compliance. And that is a community that seems to be taking off. We're also seeing, of course, policymakers, governments, I should say really explicitly, starting to express interest in routing security. And through that, actually seeing a recognition by those governments of manners, you know, calling manners out explicitly as a successful industry-led approach, which is, it can make one a little nervous when the governments start coming around asking about this. But to the extent that the Manners community is well organized, that they have a good story to tell, industry is willing to point to it as a successful way and a legitimate way to achieve the outcomes that people are speaking about. And then finally, our work on global encryption or end-to-end encryption continues. The work on Global Encryption Day is a big moment for our community. A lot of organization from our chapters, from partners culminates in this day. More than 60 events were held worldwide in 2022 for Global Encryption Day, and the campaign engaged over 11 million people. I think it's also, I mentioned up in the first bullet, you know, we managed to get 12 government entities to say something nice about encryption, which is not easy to do, especially in this environment. And that's something that we continue to push towards.
Yeah, it's always great when governments are apparently on our side. So speaking of governments apparently on our side, about this routing security thing. Is that mostly like people want to make sure that things are getting routed the way that they should be? Or are there some harder edges around that for certain people that might express an interest in routing security for other reasons?
I think you could get both perspectives. Yeah, of course, you saw the FCC in the US did the whole notice of inquiry. There are a lot of comments. We were able to put in comments a lot in our community. But always those comments will bring out the other side that are looking for something more.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the people who are deeply entangled in making sure that they can express ownership for IP address blocks in ways that perhaps, you know, NRIR would not concur with.
Yes, I think that's right. That's a concern.
Yeah, I mean, but from our perspective on this, the interest we're seeing, you would say, is primarily from people that are trying to help.
I think so. I think it is primarily of people who have woken up that this is an issue, for one thing. The, you know, the US government has come to the conclusion that they themselves, within their own networks, have fallen behind in this area and that they have work to do. And so I would say primarily, but you should always approach any sort of government engagement on a topic like this with caution. Andrew, did you, you look like you might be about to say something, or not?
I mean, I agree with you, but the additional thing is that there are a bunch of governments who weighed in on this that are basically like, you know, "We have been complaining about this for years, and now you seem to have done something." Like, "Good on you." Now, for some reason, they then go on to say, you know, "So what else can we do to help?" And it's like, "No, no, see, it's done. You don't have to worry about it." So that's the next part of the message that we have to carry forward. But we have seen, actually, sometimes governments that we wouldn't have expected to be congratulatory, saying, you know, "Actually, this is a good example of an industry-led thing that just, like, we don't need to do now." So that's a positive development, I think.
Okay, next slide, please. Empowering people to take action. In 2022, we launched the Mid-Career Fellowship and carried on the Early Career Fellowship and Youth Ambassador Program, which resulted in 98 alumni. These are the advocates. This is the next generation of advocates defending the internet. So we're really very proud of these programs as they get off the ground. As I mentioned earlier, in the Grow work, the training work continues to be in high demand. We reached over 13,000 people with our courses, and the satisfaction rates with the courses are very high. So, you know, we want to continue to build on that, on that positive feedback. We had 770 community members enrolled in the Fundamentals Program, largely from Africa and Latin America. But we did see a little bit of a drop-off in taking that training and moving it to local implementation. And that seemed to be an area where we struggled to go from training to action. But we did observe a high level of support from the chapter community in the action plan. And I think we're getting better at identifying courses of action that chapter members can take if they are looking for ideas for how to engage. You would have seen that we became active in our Amicus program this year in 2022 and into 2023, in the early parts of this year, where we are starting to weigh in on some of those legal disputes where the internet is at stake and where we think we have a unique voice that we can offer in that discussion. And we're going to continue to work on that this year. Ted, and then Brian.
So basically, a question about how we can scale that program. I mean, obviously, each jurisdiction is different, and filing amicus briefs in all of them isn't possible. It's really a function of the systems that are derived from the British legal system. But what's our theory for 2024 and going forward of how we scale this?
Do you want to speak to that, Alona? Okay. Yeah, I think it's a great question. I think just the way we've structured it originally was supposed to be small. So we've really narrowed it to make sure that, and we worked really hard on the filter, to make sure we only identify cases that are really in line with our mission and narrowly in line with our mission. There are tons of cases that we could be weighing in. Each brief is very expensive, and we have to kind of measure the impact of our voice and the expense that each brief takes. So I think it's up to the board to maybe think about whether you see value in us becoming more active and filing a lot more briefs. But initially, our reaction was to be smaller and be a lot more selective.
I think you're asking more, can we go global, right? Or can we go outside the US?
So partly that, and also, it's, from commentary that I got, it seemed like the filing of the amicus briefs was also one of the reasons that ISOC was considered as a potential voice in front of Congress and other things. It definitely seems to raise our profile in certain circles as a potential voice for our perspective. And while we're doing that in just one or two territories, the profile gets raised in just those territories. So the ability to expand it, even if it's along the same narrow lines, but in other territories, might be valuable. And I think one of the things we're going to have to ask ourselves as we consider the fragmentation question is whether there are challenges that are going to be made to different regulations that we might want to weigh in on there as well, which is a different scaling property.
Right. So I know there's been discussion within the Amicus team about how we might take this beyond the US. Of course, the Amicus is a unique feature of the US legal system, and so the opportunity to even file is something that you don't have all over the globe. But we have even entertained some other cases where at least people started exploring, is this something that, you know, it works within the filter and where we could even have an entree into the system? And so that's something that I think we want to look at. But it's going to be difficult because legal systems are not necessarily widely open to outside parties. But it is something that we have thought about, and when we began the program, it was with that in mind of, could we scale this larger if it worked?
So I think Alona started to get to this point, and my question was more on the impact side of this and how you want to measure that. Because if you go by anecdotal, I can actually tell you that I had two different departments within the US federal government ask me directly, "What took you guys so long?" So there's clearly a need for this kind of voice, and the question is, is how do we want to measure that? Because you don't need, you know, individual board members just getting these kinds of, you know, passing comments. It's more of a, you know, what is it that we can actually measure to figure out what we're doing right?
Yep, I think that's right. And it is something, now that we've had two of these filings, we've learned some things about the communication strategy when you go forward with one of these, because that's also the piece that raises the profile that then leads to the other opportunities. So I think we are learning about how to leverage this capability that we very quite recently have. And I think we share your view that there's a lot of promise here. And so that's something that I think the team actually wants to build upon this year. I'm looking at Alona because she's quite core to this piece of work. Might have been her original idea. And I guess the last line here is, "We continue to invest in our partnerships, knowing quite well that the Internet Society is one entity, and there's a lot of..." We believe in the collaborative model, and so we try to work very closely with partners. Sometimes partners have more access and more capabilities on the ground, certain kinds of expertise that we don't have, or we have expertise that they don't have. We're really trying to focus on quality of partnerships, not just increasing the number for the sake of it, but really investing in the partners that we have and so that they see value in the relationship with the Internet Society and vice versa, and that that can be something we can build upon and expand our reach. That is a summary, a high-level summary of the 48 slides. I want to point out that this work, I think we should, a little shout-out for the staff. The work and the delivery of the action plan happened, of course, at the same time as we made, we embarked on the changes that we made to the organization. And despite those changes, the staff continued on and delivered, I think, very high results for the organization this year.
Thank you very much. I do want to follow up on one thing that we didn't cover in the summary, but is in the slides, and that's the Low Earth Orbit work. I was very pleased to see, and I hadn't realized until just recently, that it actually had attracted a couple of new members.
Yes.
And that it looked like the community consultation itself was raising the profile of the Internet Society in a community that maybe didn't know that it was a useful place for them to be and to contribute. And I kind of wonder if there are next steps on the LEO front, now that we do have, you know, SpaceX and Intelsat, of going forward with them to work on any projects or if there's kind of a theory on how we start to work more with the LEO now that we have this kind of baseline.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry for glossing over that. That was a really useful piece of work. And it's actually, I'm a big believer in the policy development process because I think that is a way in which you learn from the community that you know you have, and you also learn from and bring in community members that weren't part of us. And that project really succeeded, probably wildly in that perspective from where we sit. That work has been now incorporated in the Connecting the Unconnected project because what we wanted to do last year was understand the landscape and what was going on in that space. There's, of course, a lot of promise. There's a lot of work for that industry to deliver on that promise, of course. But they're extremely active. We get a lot of questions from governments. We got them this week on that topic. And so what we're doing is incorporating it into the approach that we take to our Grow work. So we don't want to just drop it and forget about it. And those partners are an active part of that line of work.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Sally? Laura, did you have a question? No, okay. Other questions? Okay, I guess we're ready for the next presentation.
Okay, here I go. All right. So we sent a memo, and this is just a slide with a timeline for you to be able to take a look at that. We are, in 2023, well, I should say, at the end of 2024, we will reach the end of our five-year strategy that the Internet Society has been working towards. Andrew mentioned this yesterday. And it is the time to start developing the strategy for 2030, the five-year strategy. And we're excited by that. We have a stronger infrastructure in which to develop such a strategy. And we see the board as a key driver of the organization's high-level strategy for the next five years. And so what we wanted to do in this session was put that on your radar screen, make you aware that this is coming, and also encourage you to start thinking about how you might want to work on that and give you at least some food for thought as to examples of how other organizations have positioned their 2030 strategies. This is something a lot of organizations are embarking on right now. And then also, start the discussion with you about what support and inputs you might be looking for from staff. So this is the strategy, I was mentioning this over breakfast. This is the strategy that helps guide our annual action plans. It helps guide our measurements and our targets, and also our workforce strategy, understanding where we want to go and where we have the expertise, where we might have gaps, and allows us to do that kind of long-range planning that I think the board has been asking for for quite a long time. So really, what we wanted to say here is we see some touchpoints on the calendar in the coming year. There's opportunities during your in-person meetings for the board to engage on this topic. We would welcome, if the board was willing to really dig into this during the retreat. And, but we want to urge you to work towards an agreement in the April timeframe because it's on the basis of that strategy that we can develop the next year's action plan.
So in previous developments, was there usually a public consultation, and at what point was that done?
I think it's difficult to say usual, but I think, yes, we would like to do that. But I think a consultation would be more useful when, after, if the board had some general ideas. You know, we think these are the kinds of goals that the society should be working towards, and then possibly put those out for public comment, maybe after the September timeframe. What we find is the more general calls for input that are just, "What do you think?" The feedback that you get isn't as quality as you would hope. I would also say, I think you've heard people mention this, we decided this year to engage in kind of a listening campaign with the community. And we're asking one question of just about anybody we talked to, whether it's a chapter member, an org member, a governor, an official, or your next-door neighbor. What do you think is the greatest threat to the internet? And conversely, if you get into a conversation, what is the greatest opportunity? And we're starting to map the responses that we get to that. And that is a non-scientific community consultation, but it is a way, you know, the kind of input that we could also provide to the board.
So Sally, have you considered reaching out to organizations like Elon University that do these? They already do these kinds of questionnaires, looking at what are the biggest challenges in the internet space. And I'm wondering if they might be able to give you a broader perspective because their database of, it's more of the experts. And I can send you information about it, but it might give you a different perspective on what those challenges might look like.
That'd be fabulous. I'd like that, yeah.
So if I could read this back, the general approach would be you're doing work to get input from various folks. Obviously, we could help there. Obviously, we could help there. Would we narrow that down to a set of topics or areas by which then the board says this is the these are the key areas of investigation? Or like we would narrow it down to some key areas, and then we do the detailed planning from there? Or that there's a detailed set of information that we build from there? Or I'm just trying to understand what the what the structure is by which to get to a final product is.
I I think I I think you're describing this as though what you're building is a plan. That's not the goal here. The goal here is to set some priorities, right? The the staff has to go away and make action plans and so on. But but just as so, I think Sally was a little too kind about this. The reality is, the last time that we did this, the board just, you know, sort of said, go. And we went away and we came up with this, you know, build, promote, defend sort of framework in which in which we work. But we needed something against which we're going to say, okay, well, like, you know, there's a reason why we're doing this project or not. You know, when somebody comes and says, okay, well, we want to, we want to plant a million trees, because that will allow us to have poles that we can run fiber on. Is that in or not? Well, the answer is no, that's not our job. But the reason it's not our job is because we've got these priorities, and it's the priorities that we really need the board to to establish. So it's not so much the details or anything like that. It's really just like, you know, okay, these are the things that you want to work on. And these are the things that are, and if you have to choose between, you know, two excellent projects, the the tree planting thing and the and the and the network planting thing, which one do you pick? Okay, well, we picked the network planting thing. So that's the kind of, but you know, maybe more, maybe a little pointier here, right? If we have to choose, for instance, between, say, we've got, you know, a million dollar grant opportunity, we've got two of them. One of them is gonna is 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 requiring us to, you know, build more physical infrastructure. And the other one is is in effort i- in support of policy work to to make sure that the Internet doesn't shut down in various in various countries. Which one of those do you want us to to work on? Because we've only got so many so many resources. And I think that that's that's really what we're looking for as the as a sort of, you know, it's a it's really a filter.
Yes, Brian was saying, the you may also consider the Pew Research Center to increase the the broadness of what we're looking in 2030.
Follow up. Sorry, I keep going to process questions versus contextual things, but okay, got it. That makes sense. So then, as part of this narrowing down, if there's an error, if there's like a larger list of things we could do, would would you would we go through the, is it the practice to say, hey, this is the size of the opportunity? These are the kinds of outcomes we'd want. This is the this is the feasibility of the organization to be able to do it. And then you pick, or is it more like just, these are the areas you need to focus, come back and say, like, I just trying to figure out like what that part looks like there?
Yeah, if you think about, for instance, the the priorities that we we had, starting in in 2018, 2019, right? I mean, the the statement is just like, you know, okay, build, promote, and defend the Internet. That's that's sort of the the framework in which we're living. And and we need something that is like, really not much more detailed than that. Because the rest of it is really, you know, like, uh, they're they're operational questions. Like, for instance, you know, okay, build, promote, defend the Internet. Okay, well, what you need to do is like hook up the the all of the remaining, like, whatever it is now, thirty something percent of the world that doesn't have, well, like, we just don't have that much money. So like, you know, instead, we've got to pick like which ones are the opportunities that we can do. But that's really a staff problem of like, you know, how much money do we have, and what are the capabilities that we have and so on? You know, one of the things we could have done is like, launch satellites to connect to connect the rest of the world. The the only problem is like, we don't have a billion couple of dollars to, you know, to launch any satellites. So that was not one of the feasible feasible things that the Internet Society could do. You know, so that's, I I think that's the 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 filter, that really is a is a staff problem. Whereas the, you know, okay, you should build, promote, defend, those are like large scale buckets that give us the direction, you know, the scope in which we ought to be working. I see Laura moving. Okay, so that is a hint.
Yes, right before I was, it's full pollen season here, so before I was scratching my eyes. Um, one thing I think to think about here, too, is when you're asking those questions of like, what should we do, right? A a filter that I have found useful, especially in this kind of space where, you know, you don't have unlimited resources, right? Is what are the things that we can do that other people can't do, right? What is the Internet Society best positioned to do that other people in the space cannot? And secondly, what is like the point of leverage, right? Like, where is the place where you can have the biggest impact? You know, that's within our budget and resources and so on. So I think those are, you know, potentially things that the board can help with in terms of filters as well. You know, I don't I don't think we need to help you say that we're not going to launch a bunch of satellites, because I think we can all see this, you know, probably out of scope.
But but to to pile on a little bit, so when we had this conversation the last time, you know, there were various sorts of things that we were looking at, like, what is the Internet Society? Like, what what should we be focused on? And one of the possibilities was, oh, we should, we should focus on the one of the things that was on the table, we should focus on the 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 human rights consequences of, you know, connectivity and so on. And what did we do? Well, we looked around at like, does the Internet Society have the capability to do that? Do we have the staff? Do we have the advantage? And are there lots of other, like, is this a a differentiating thing? Well, you look around, and there are like twenty people who are working on human rights and and the Internet. But very few people who are working on Internet connectivity in its own terms as like, sort of intrinsically good. Okay, so we said, okay, well, we're going to work on the intrinsically good thing, because that's the that's the sort of comparative advantage that the Internet Society brings to it. So exactly as you said, Laura, that that's that's the sort of thing that we are looking for from from the board. And then similarly, like, you know, to put to put it on the other foot. You know, we we want you, you, we, like, the board, want want the staff to go and, you know, develop this capacity, because this is actually more important, and you need to, you need to develop this muscle, and we don't have it right now, or we do have it, but it's weak, or something like that. Increase this, you know, the the focus on X, and therefore decrease the focus on Y and so forth. And those are the things that I think we need the board to to set that direction, because that's what boards do.
The other thing I wanted to to look at from this timeline perspective is, if if there's anybody we want to talk to at the June AGM to get in input from, those invitations should go out soon. So if there are folks on the board that that feel like the perspective of particular community members or academics or other experts in this area would be valuable for you to help formulate this, it would be a great time to start circulating those to the other members of the board, and we could think about how to get them invited to the AGM so that we can have a conversation that helps us bring bring this forward. Obviously, there's also the the possibility of bringing them to a retreat. But it would be, it would be nice to have tho- those ideas as early as possible, so we have as many chances to to get the that kind of perspective in as we can. Renelli, it looked like you had a.
So in terms of developing a strategy for ISOC, what's really important for the board in determining what will be the focus for the next five years is to also have clarity on what success looks like. And to be able to describe that, because then the staff can do their part in sort of planning it out. That's quite important. I want to touch on the timeline. This is quite important, because there is a dependency between having clarity on the ISOC strategy and then the supporting organization strategy, which needs to come up in the same timeline. And so by September, there must be absolute clarity on what the focus area is and an idea about what success looks like. Because if it's later than that, we are going to impact on the development of the strategy of the supporting organization, because both action plans would go out for January 2025. And I'll go into that timeline data when we go into the foundation meeting.
Okay, I thi- I think we we probably want to think about whether we actually want to have more than one foundation related high level direction, because we we definitely have a a set of giving related high level directions that have been there in terms of the programs that are there now, and a review of those and and deciding whether those are still the the right programs to to carry forward is is one thing. And then the the action plan as it relates to the activities as a supporting organization, separate from the giving side, might need to be more tightly knit to this. Where I think there there's there's probably a muscle we don't have yet of how we how we do this when there, some of the functions are in a supporting organization as opposed to in ISOC. So I think we might, we might need to make sure we understand which bits go into the supporting organization action plan, sorry, high level strategy, and which bits go into the ISOC high level strategy when they're when they are distinct. So we probably need to have a bit of discussion about that when we come to the 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 point this afternoon.
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? I mean, I I think a few things I heard was we we will follow up on the Elon Elon University. I think that's a a nice, a nice way to get some additional community input. The the staff is working on some trends analysis that they will, if if the board is interested, would input into this process. There was some work done two years ago on Internet trends that we've asked a team to to take another look at in light of recent events in the last twenty four months and and update that, and they can share some priorities with with the with the board. But what we may do is is let you have a think about this and come back at the next informal meeting and see if there are any other pieces of input that the board would like going into the the strategy development. And with that, I think I'm done with this.
Okay, the the last piece of this, just just from my perspective to the board, is that if there is work we want to start doing now, I think we we're not constrained to wait for the AGM. This is an ongoing process. The the ultimate agreement will be done by a board that will have some different people than this board, because we're appointing at least one new person. But I think we can start anytime, no, no need to wait. And the information gathering from Elon or the Pew or or coming up with names is something we can do now. And if there are opportunities at co-located events or things to 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 do this, we probably want to do it. I think we also want to think quite early about where we want to do the board retreat. And how we want to use that to do this development. And obviously, the decision won't be made until until the AGM. But one opportunity I think we might want to think about is co-locating with the IGF. And although that means coming back to Japan, I know that's a problem for a lot of people. It 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 also would give us a pool of people that we might talk to. Just like the ICAN co-location for the DC meeting gives us a pool of people we might talk to. People coming to the IGF might be a broader set of folks to consult with, and it's a somewhat simpler to to pull them into a side meeting if we're sharing a place. He points out it's in October, which is late for a retreat, but not ridiculous. Yeah.
So. But but just in terms of like what the exercise is going to be for us this year around this. And I I'm really taking my cue here from Andrew. I mean, we're looking at grow, promote, defend, and saying, that sound good? Or do we need to fix that, right? I mean, or or do you think we need to blue sky this, you know, in terms of the consultations being like, because if if those seem like pretty and it may be, okay, we want to say defend, grow, promote, whatever, right? But like, is is that the exercise? Do you think there's a deeper exercise we need to do as a board this year?
I I think there's a little bit deeper exercise to to speak personally, and Andrew can can correct me afterwards. And that's possibly because I think some of what we have been previously assuming fell into build might become something like enable, where we take the capabilities that have been created for for building IXP's and community networks and hand them off, because now the the set of kind of sister organizations that are focused on that has increased. Where there there weren't so many of those five years ago, there's now several new ones and some new models being considered. So we might actually be saying, okay, we we still focused on building out the Internet. We still think it's important to connect the unconnected, but maybe the way we do that is enable rather than build. So there's a bit of looking out out at the at the environment and saying, what's changed in terms of the organizations that are focused on this that tells us how we want to approach that? So it's maybe not blue sky, but more looking at the data of of what's around us to tell us both what the new challenges are and who the new allies are. Pepper.
So, and again, we can come back to it. But your point about IGF, right? So last time we had the discussion about where, you know, where we meet, who we co-locate with. I actually made the case why we should not go to the IGF. But I think, and I'm happy to, you know, but given what we've seen, given the conversations that we've had over the last day, the some of the the issues that are that are arising in different fora, including at the UN, yesterday, we talked a little bit about the global digital compact work. I think the IGF may be actually an important venue to be able to have conversations with people who are thinking about these issues that would benefit from ISOC's work, especially the type of work that Sally presented earlier. So I'm happy to park that and and have that conversation. Think I'm think, you know, the last day and a half made me think about that a little differently.
And obviously, if you want to go to Geneva, there's eel flotant on every street corner, something to recommend.
Not white asparagus season, though.
So true.
Yes, I support Pepper's idea, because I think IGF is more on the youth thinking side. Yes, as chaotic as it can be, but the it will may bring good sense of what young people are having on the on their minds regarding the Internet. So it's also a trend looking place.
Okay, the the higher order bit for this isn't to make a decision on this today, obviously, but but to start thinking about who we're going to consult with, how we're going to structure these.
Which was why I was like, so what are we actually trying to do? Because I think that will determine to some degree who we need to consult with, right?
And I think that the coming to the build, promote, defend style decision is clearly what we have to do. But I think we we have a lot of details to look at before we abstract back out to that. If if we just wanted to pick three new slogan words, I can roll some dice and come up with good ones. But the we we have to look pretty carefully at what's going on in the environment before we get to that level of of abstraction. Uh, anymore on this topic? Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Back to fragmentation? Or is there any other, any other?
Is there? Actually, let me suggest that we adjust this slightly and do the two items that have already come up for AOB before fragmentation. Because I think for fragmentation, we might want to go back into executive session, and those can't be done in executive session. So so Lauren, I know this was fast changing, but were you able to get the? Okay, so in a couple of minutes, we'll we'll have the the resolution available for accessibility that that has been discussed on the list back and forth this morning. Muhammad, do you want to talk to this just a moment? But I think we're we're very, very much ready to to bring the the resolution forward. But if you want to talk to it for a moment while we're getting it up, that'd be great.
I think I'll just take a couple of minutes and we can go directly to the resolution. Okay, so thank you very much. I just wanted to thank the Accessibility ISOC Accessibility Resolution Task Force, the colleagues, Louise, Perry, Sagarika, who worked with me and Charles as well, who worked with me to draft this resolution. Then we had this resolution looked at by Ilona. Thank you very much. And also, the the most profound thanks goes to Andrew, because he has been the one pushing us on different things. Because not, if not for him, we would not be at this stage where we are today. This is, I think, a very good resolution that we can all agree to. There are a couple of There are a couple of points, though, I would want to be more refined. But I think in favor of consensus, this is something that Internet Society needs to do. And we will go behind it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I've joined with Mohammed and thanking all the people who worked on creating this resolution and policy. If folks haven't already had a chance to review it on the mailing list, it's in front of you now on the, on the projector. And so I, I'd like to ask if there's any further discussion of the resolution before we take it up.
This is the version including Elona's.
Yes, the, the most recent version that has her, her red line. Okay, seeing no discussion, I'd like to ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? The resolution passes. Thank you very much to everyone for all your hard work on this. There were two other quick items. One, from Luis, you wanted to talk about awards and recognition.
Yeah, so I briefly take this time to, as you know, many of the awards and recognitions that the Internet Society grants, there, it's always a question about who is giving, who's choosing the awardee, who is, where is transparency? So it's a normal way it happens in the Internet Society. We have a number of rules about this. But the most recent one about the John Postel Award, the people are claiming about transparency. So I came to think if it's not important to create sort of an awards and recognitions commission led by the board in order to protect or do what Elona describes as overseeing the, the Internet Society name, then to attend these transparency claims and the procedural claims or fairness claims that may affect the, the view of the Internet Society. And also because most international organizations that give awards and grants and prizes, they usually have a commission, mixed commission between a dedicated commission for the prize, but also the, the, the organization at large. So that's one idea, which I want to submit to the consideration of you. If we should be working on this, if not, just let me know and it's okay. And the other thing is the, coming into this same line about our recognition, the, as, as we know, there's a number of community networks that have grown from ISOC, yes, that have been granted funds to be created, to grow. But now they are in a maturity stage. And what does it means that in this maturity stage, they, they need to develop a healthy business model? But they're nonprofit, or at least we think they are nonprofit, yes. So the, for them, the easiest thing to do is to go and ask funds to the foundation. And the foundation may lead them through the normal procedure and they may provide funds. But I believe that this road is not very sustainable because people are just learning the way that the foundation wants to deal with these projects, yes. But what happens in the future? We decide that the funds of the foundation should be going into any other direction. They need to go out and seek funds for, keep running these community networks. So I believe that the, the, if the foundation or ISOC award recognition to these community networks, we are not talking about money. We're just talking about recognition that these community networks demonstrate that they satisfy some sustainability criteria such as extensive social impact or benefit, that they are strictly nonprofit, they have a healthy business model, and they are in the midterm maintainable under technical standards. Yes, I believe this recognition may improve their sustainability by source diversification of income for maintaining the community network. They will provide them with a high-level recognition that may support other grant requests apart from those going into the foundation. And also, it may create a new goal for these community networks. With the first goal was to build the network, then to keep the network. Now they need something superior to keep this continuous self-improvement. So that's my proposal. Thank you.
So I, I heard two completely distinct proposals. I think I misunderstood what you were, you were asking for because I think the second discussion should, should be definitely a foundation discussion that we can take up later in the day, if you, if you don't mind my suggesting that.
One of the issues may be that, where is the technical expertise to evaluate these criteria? Is it in ISOC or is it in the foundation?
Well, because of the, the, the current situation, I, I think we can, we can work between them to find that. The question really is, whose task is it to make the assignment? And they can find the, the technical expertise in the community to do that. So if, if the foundation would be the one that says, we're, we're going to provide a recognition that you've kind of graduated, so to speak, then I think that's a foundation discussion and we should, we should have that along with others on how we recommend those that have successfully completed any of the, the projects, how, how we recognize that. So that's maybe a broader discussion. On the first question, which is about creating a committee to oversee some of this, I would be much more comfortable if you had a charter because I can imagine that going in like three different ways, some of which are very light touch and some of which are very intensive. So if I could, you know, ask if there's anybody who'd like to join Luis in working on this project.
Can we do a mic plan? I saw a bunch of hands that were about to go up, so.
Okay.
I think George was the first that saw.
Okay, so, so George, did you also have a?
Thanks. Thank you. I'm sorry, I, I heard two proposals also, and I'm just going to comment on the first one. The, I missed the March meeting unfortunately, but I listened to the, the meeting, the parts that were recorded. And I found myself being confused. That's sort of a natural condition for me these days. But in particular, in this case, the, the concern about transparency. And I, I really feel a little bit awkward talking about this because I was the latest postel recipient. And so I'm, I was involved in this process. But I was also involved in the Internet Hall of Fame selection criteria for three, three rounds. And there was reference made in the discussion in the March meeting to that. As I think being the way in which when a model for, for conducting affairs of this sort, I, I'm puzzled by the need for transparency. I'd really, I'd like to identify what is untransparent about the way in which we're doing it now. Now, there's several phases to this. One is, do we, do we solicit nominations from the right people? Do we make nominations, calls for nominations widely acceptable? Do we have criteria for the way in which we select people? In the case of the Internet Hall of Fame, yes, but they're, they're quite varied and, but nevertheless, they do exist in the Postel Hall of Fame, or the, sorry, the Postel Award. We really don't because it's up to the people who are, who are already members of the, of the committee. And then the announcement phase. So I don't see the lack of transparency in any of this. This is really more like a personnel action where we're talking about individuals who have made various contributions in various ways. Let's talk about the Hall of Fame, whether it's regional, national, local, whether it's sectoral, whether it's technical, whether it's social. All of these things come into play. And I can tell you that the discussion of every individual, when the Hall of Fame folks get together, is pretty, pretty thorough. And we go back and forth over and over trying to, at the same time, establish what kind of criteria we are implicitly using to gauge the relative merits of various people's claim to being members. So I'd really like to talk about specifics with regard to transparency that, that are bothering people right now.
So because we are in open session, we can talk about the specifics of the criteria. But we obviously are not going to talk about any individuals. John?
Yeah, I, I, I think transparency, and this is wrapped up with a number of other issues. And obviously, people have pointed to a certain amount of dysfunction, inability to come to consensus among the juries that are associated with some of these awards. I'm not sure this is a committee thing, but is this is being done in our name? I think we need to look into this. I'm not sure what form that needs to take. But I will say that a lot of juries that have similar sorts of functions out in the world these days have been very actively trying to create more diversity amongst their jurors, among other things, right? And the, the way that these things are structured is, you know, I think kind of old school at this point. And I don't know what sort of rejiggering needs to be done in order to create something that I think looks a bit more pluralist than what we have for this. But when I start seeing this level of, we can't make an award this year because we're debtlocked kind of stuff over, over issues that, again, we're not going to discuss, I think, here, right? Especially, this is open session, right? I should probably be, be even more circumspect. But like, I mean, I think we need to look into this.
I'd like to respond to that. To, to the extent that there is a, an implicit bias in the way in which these selections are made, I think you're right. But to the extent where we just want to, if we want just to introduce more diversity because we feel more diversity is required on the part of people who have acted in various ways in order to qualify themselves for the Hall of Fame, I think that's a big mistake.
I think, Luis, before I take you out, I'm sensing that this conversation needs to move to executive session. So I think I'd like to ask if there are any last comments on this before we close it that, that are open session comments, or whether we should close the open session and take it up again. All right, we're going to go to executive session where we'll, we'll handle this topic and then continue the fragmentation discussion. Thank you very much for, those of you who've been attending. Thanks to the board for a very interesting and productive discussion on these topics. Very much appreciated. Is there any other matters to bring before the board at this time? Seeing none, the board is adjourned. Thank you again for being here.